Jordan, please rise for the place to play.
I will be just to the play of the United States of America and the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no additions or amendments, I'd like to make motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Who's in support of it? Approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Here now, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes for the regular meeting of July the 13th.
Make a motion, minutes we approved as presented.
I'll support that.
Who's in support of approve the minutes as presented? Is there any discussion? Here now, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is financial report.
We began the month with $255,482.23 and we took in receipts of $62,628.12. We made disbursements in the amount of $136,921.88, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $181,188.47.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
I'll support that.
Who's in support of to approve the financial report as submitted? Any discussion? Here now, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, correspondence, item A. We received an invitation from the EDA, which is Economic Development, it was an association or something anyway. They're gonna have their annual meeting September the 13th. And you're invited to go. You can make your own RSVP. And if you go, then I'm sure the board will reimburse you for your expenses.
How much is it? Thirty dollars?
Thirty dollars per.
Sounds like a good program. I can't make that have another meeting that night.
Thursday night, what time? Five?
Do we need a motion for the reimbursement?
If you want to, or we can do it, the next meeting doesn't matter. Somebody.
I make a motion for any board members who would like to attend the 2018 annual meeting for the Economic Development Alliance of Sinclair County.
I'll support that.
Who's in support of to reimburse any board members that attend annual meeting of the EDA? Oh, I guess we'll just do it like this. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. There he goes, right to the second. I think you were hiding out there looking through the window. Okay. Moving on, we have an old business and a new business. Item A is the 2018 audit. And the auditor just showed up, so I think he's gonna call over for us.
Yeah, well, did that plaque is wrong.
It's four minutes slow.
Costs money to buy that.
Well, we did do the audit.
Yeah, you did.
We did. Yep, our firm came, did the audit. And all is well. We didn't find any issues that we needed to report to the state of Michigan, which that is a good thing. The books were in good order, that also is a good thing. So the audit went well and we would've issued you an audit report, it's in the blue binder. If you look through the audit report and you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them in any, you know, to the best of my ability. Other than that, we're just simply gonna talk about the sheet of paper that I handed out to you. This is kind of an overview of the finances or the financial aspect of the township, and it gives you a four-year comparison here. Where in the report, it's just this current year, so we add these prior years on there, kinda gives us an idea of where we're at and what's going on. The first part of this page up at the top is the general fund. The general fund, the first line there is cash. This is the amount of cash that's on hand in the township as of March 31st of the respective years. So on March 31st, 2018, we had $771,000 worth of cash. Last year, we had $616,000 worth of cash. And the year before that, we had $807,000 worth of cash. The reason that there was a large drop in cash, or relatively large drop, from '16 to '17 is because that's when we put remodeling in addition and money into the township hall. So we had cash of $771, we have accounts receivables of $92,000, we have some other current assets of $17,000, and just a few liabilities, probably accrued payroll taxes. So our fund balance, fund balance being the funds available to spend, fund balance was 700, or I'm sorry, $878,000 compared to last year of $723,000. We took in some revenues, again, this is general fund. We took in property taxes, state shared revenues, license permits and fees, and some other miscellaneous types of income. Our total monies taken in this past year was $761,000. And you can see that that's just, you know, we're gradually increasing our revenues over the last four years, but each year, it's a little bit of an increase. And then we had our expenditures. General government, that's kind of the operation of the township, was $228,000. Public safety was $157,000. Public works was $202,000. Capital Outlay, $16,000, that capital outlay was paving the parking lot, that was about $9,000. And then we purchased a copy machine in a lawnmower. And you can see the year before, the capital outlay was $202,000, and that was this township hall, most of it anyways. Any questions so far? Okay. We have parks and recreation. The fund balance in the parks and recreation is $391,000. This is a special revenue fund, so the only expenditure, the only way we can spend this money is to spend it on parks and recreation, we have $391,000. We took in our $17,000, that $17,000 is your county share of the parks and recreation millage that you take in each year. You can see it stayed about the same the last four years. It's fairly consistent, $17,500. We had some other miscellaneous revenues of $6,600. So we took in $24,000. We spent $3,400. So we actually increased our fund balance, or we accumulated $20,722. Thus, we went from the $370 to the $391. Any questions there? Okay. Liquor law enforcement. Liquor law enforcement, we have $9,529. It's a fund that we really don't want much money in anyways, so we do what we can to keep the money, the balance down. That's the money that we receive from the state of Michigan to monitor the liquor law enforcement. And so we take in $4,146, that's what we took in this year, that's from the state of Michigan. And, you know, that's consistent with the last four years. And we spend $4,400 to monitor and the liquor law. So consequently, we had $252 that we used in our fund balance, which brought it down to $9,500. And that really is kind of an overview of the township. So if we have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Or if we have any questions in the report, I would be happy to answer. Any questions?
You mentioned about you saw no items that you'd have to report to the state. What would be some of those items?
Money missing.
Yeah, I guess that'd be one.
Well, that's the obvious one. Obviously, we'd have to report fraud, but if there was internal control procedures that wasn't being handled correctly.
I see.
You know, you have to reconcile your bank statement, and the clerk and the treasurer have to reconcile together. And we've been in township, especially in newly elected officials, you know, they don't even know how to reconcile a bank statement, let alone that they reconcile together. And if the clerk and the treasurer is not reconciling their cash together, we'd have to let the state know that, hey, we got a problem.
I see.
Or it's the clerk's responsibility to maintain a general ledger. Well, if we come here and we don't find a general ledger, you know? And it's the treasurer's responsibility to collect property taxes and settle with the county, and to make sure everything balances. And if we find that it isn't balancing, and they haven't settled, and things are, you know? So it's issues, it's just issues that need to be done. Or, you know, you have park money here. We have $391,000 of park money, and maybe the board decides to pave a road with that. So, and if you all get together and do it, and it's done, and I get here and I'm an auditor, and I'm saying, oh, wait a second, that's money that came in for parks, you can't pave a road with that. And so I'd have to call the county estate and say, they're misappropriating funds from one fund to another.
I see. All right, well, thank you.
Those are types of things, and we do run into those. And we do occasionally, you know, but most township officials in most townships do very, quite well.
Usually, it's kind of a procedural error, you know, they're not familiar with this.
That's what normally happens. There's an APR. Boy, what's the APR? I've used the acronym for so long, I don't know.
Annual percentage.
Well, there you go, that's maybe what it was. But that's the acronym for the report that we have to send to the state. And it's about six pages long. And basically, we have to check the questions off on this six-page report that says, yes, the township did this, yes, the township did this, yes, the township did this. And if we find some questions, and we quite often do, it also has to do with balancing the budget. You know, if you have a budget that's not balanced, you know, if we budget that we're gonna spend $50,000 on roads, but we spend $75,000 on roads, I gotta turn that into the state, that you can't follow your budget.
All right, you got a thing. I have a question.
Sure.
Under the liquor fund.
Yes.
This last year, we actually paid back that $772. Are you sure that's reflected in here in the expenditures?
Well, that wouldn't be an expenditure. That's.
Transferred to another fund, it's not an expenditure out of this fund? It came out of here or into general?
It was a due to and due from, so it's a liability.
Due to general fund?
Yeah, it was a due to, so it's not an expenditure, it's just paying back what was owed.
No, it's no longer there.
If I lend you some money, and then you pay me back, when I lend you the money, it's not income to you, and when you pay me back, it's.
Yeah, it should at least be reflected in the fund balance, isn't it?
No.
That fund?
Well, it was, it was, because you had cash of $10,553, and you owed the general fund $772, so your fund balance was $9,781. So if you had took the cash out and netted that, your cash would've been $9,781. So it was already reflected in the fund balance.
Yeah. Okay, just ask.
That's all right, you can ask whatever question.
Just for your information, and I hope you're delighted about it, I finally got off the wallet. And we now have trust and agency and parks and recreation checks that require two signatures. Okay? The only fund that doesn't have a two-signature line on it is the liquor fund, but that liquor fund checks go out through the clerk's office, and they're balanced by my office. So although I don't see the check, I certainly see the number of the check.
Sure, sure.
But as soon as my checks run out, we have ordered them, I have them.
See.
So that will, as soon as I run out these checks, they will be double signatures.
Yes, awesome. I might have missed it, but you're not citing any internal controls issues now, are you?
We are not.
No, that's good.
The only internal control issue that we cite, and it's really beyond a small township to conquer, is segregation of duties.
We don't have enough people to segregate.
We don't have enough, and you can't afford to do it.
It's the state government. They have enough.
We are doing it according to state law, and so there's no problem with what we're doing, it's by state law. But in reality, state law does not give us enough segregation of duties to say that you don't have deficiency in your internal control. When you have the treasurer, collect the money, deposit the money, do the bank reconciliation, and balance the books all, there's too many tasks that the treasurer does that we can't give you a clean slate. But that's really across the board. I'm not sure there's any townships and any small villages that don't have that comment.
But does it help at all that there is a segregation of duties in the treasurer's office, in that the deputy has one set of responsibilities and the treasurer the other?
We encourage to have as many segregation of duties as you possibly can have. It's just that it's not enough for us to give you a clean slate.
I see, I see. Well, it's not enough of a slap on the wrist for us to order or have superfluous people floating around in this office.
We understand that completely.
And spend more money.
We understand that completely. Internal control costs money. It doesn't matter what internal control it is, it costs money. And so quite often, the cost of the internal control is not, does not justify what you get in the internal control. Anything else?
Is everybody's happy?
Actually, this was the smoothest one we had.
Good.
I told Wes to have lunch, because next year when they come, if that trust and agency don't zero all, you're not leaving.
Your folks are very good to work with.
Yes, they are.
Every single one.
We try. Yep, it's worked out good. Now, my daughter, my son-in-law has come in within the, I don't know if Angela and Joey, I'm sure they would've been here.
Yes, they're great to work with.
Yeah. And then my son, of course, and so it's been, it's turned into a family affair.
That's great, well, we appreciate your efforts, and.
I think we're generally very lucky here, I saw a documentary on fraud in a small town last night. Reagan's birthplace. The clerk, I believe, embezzled $53 million.
I told you this.
How in the world could somebody do that and get past?
I'm not encouraging you to watch that.
I saw it too, Dan.
What she did is she had an account that wasn't in the name of the township, that she moved, or the city that she moved money into, or accidentally, and then the town had to borrow to make up, and didn't realize what was going on. It was all a segregation of duties issue.
And how long did it take?
I think it was about 10, 12 years.
Really?
Well timed.
Yeah, 20, I think it was more like 20.
During that period, she showed world championship quarter horses.
Really?
Yes.
I saw that.
It was very interesting. $53 million.
$53 million?
I can't even conceive of that.
It wasn't a big town, it was Reagan's birthplace.
Yeah, in Illinois.
Dixon, Illinois?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, every time we go to a seminar, they use that as the.
They do. $53.
She was doing infrastructure, that was where most of the money was going from.
But it still was a pretty good size. I mean, you couldn't get.
They had to have money, but they had to have money to the mail.
I mean, she did everything.
Yeah. And everybody was sort of very complacent. And the auditing firm handled a lot of the transactions for the city, which, you know, sort of compounded the whole problem, because the invoices they were paying, they were just auditing too, so they never saw it, or didn't. Nobody else was complicit, at least the feds could not find anybody complicit, but you wonder about the auditing firm that was so involved in both paying their bills and reaping their receipts and collections.
I just, it was amazing.
It was amazing. Really, the distressing part was the stats on the amount of fraud and embezzlement that occurs in this country, it's tremendous, just tremendous. I was surprised at the university when we had internal auditors.
And we worry about, yeah.
They said it's tense off, and I'm looking for it for three hours. It's just unbelievable what they find.
Hello.
I think, the point is, I think we're awfully lucky, we've never had that problem here, others around us have had some difficult issues. We've never had a problem like that. We even suspected there was one. It's the opposite, you gotta die of reality.
Yeah, we do.
Did the clerk get to bring her horse trophy?
She'll be in the slammer till she's 82.
Does she get to bring her horse trophy?
No, they liquidated all of her assets, and I think recovered about $42 million, but the lawyers took a good portion of it.
I always say, we're probably the only treasurer's office in the whole county that has a change cup that we throw our change in, and if somebody's check is short 20 cents, we throw them 20 cents, because I'm not billing them out. That's 40 cents for me to tell them that they're 20 cents short and everything.
No, we are really lucky.
I agree. So I'm part of that.
Okay, well, appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, thanks.
Very good, all righty, very good.
Tell your entire staff that it was a good experience.
They did a good job.
Always is.
Thank you.
$53. How good's your sleeping?
Yeah, I don't get that.
You'll be waiting for the other shoe to drop. Yeah, you tell me.
I'm sure it's worse in the private sector than. Okay, item B.
Don't, we need to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could've done a while this year. Normally, we have a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Yeah, we can do it now.
Yeah.
I make the motion to accept the audit as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Who's in support of to accept the audit?
My pen just died.
Did I tell you we're gonna do a roll call on that?
Yes. Am I doing a roll call? All right, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, our update.
Yeah, now we are.
Parks and Recreation Village request. Every year, the county raises money through a countywide village for Parks and Recreation, and every township gets a small portion of that. This year, our portion is $18,028.75. So we have to submit an application for the distribution of that money. And it is on the table in front of you, which shows what we got last year. The auditor filled himself while he was doing the audit, so it saved us a little work. And so we would need a motion, please.
I move that we submit an application for the Parks and Recreation Village distribution in Casco Township.
I'll support that.
Who's in support of approve the request for village distribution to Parks and Recreation? Is there any discussion? Whatever, roll call, vote, please.
Okay, Colleen, yes. Phil?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C. I kinda went over this in the update last year. The spiders were taking over the outside of the building. And when it's aluminum siding, it's not bad, but vinyl siding, they stain it, and I don't know if you're ever gonna get that out. So last year, we had ABNC come out, they did a very good job, but there's still enough left this year that we need to hit it again. There's another pest control company out there that was highly recommended, so I got a price in the two. Leo's Pest Control is $200, and ABC is $295. So I would recommend that we go with Leo's Pest Control.
Aye.
I'll move that we authorize Leo's Pest Control to get care of the spiders and other insects for the building in the amount of $200.
I'll support that.
Who's in support of approve the price of $200 from Leo's Pest Control? Is there any discussion? Have a roll call, vote, please.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, and we've been waiting for this one for a while. We finally got the agreement from the DNR in regards to the acquisition grant, and we have to get this back into them. And when they sign it and get it back to us, then we can move ahead. So I'm trying to line people up, but I can't do anything until we get the agreement back. You might notice on the second to the last page of the agreement, I don't know how well you read it, but it says the method of payment. We're gonna pay to buy it, and then go for reimbursement, rather than try and coordinate the DNR to pay a closing, because they tell me that's not always very smooth. Page 10 of the letter, at the top.
Oh, yeah.
So I checked that out. We don't, it's not a problem, we have the money. I think it'd make it smoother, less aggravation.
Sure.
And how much are we gonna be paying then?
You know, because we still have to do some stuff that's reimbursable, but it'll be right around $200,000. It'll be very, very close. So we're getting, right now, we're getting $148 from the state, $26 from the county, and they're supposed to reimburse us for the appraisal, hopefully legal fees, and I'm not 100% sure on the title work. They've said our phase one environmental tests from two years ago were satisfactory, so we didn't have to redo that. So that's kind of where we stand right now. So now, the last page in there is the resolution that we're gonna be adopting tonight that covers this agreement.
This is a lot of, this is almost brutal reading this stuff.
I know, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's 85 pages, we're gonna bring some excitement.
We have to have a ribbon cutting ceremony. It says there, we have, the local media has to be there.
No, first you have to buy a plaque from the trust fund.
From them, from them, they're the places.
No trust fund, no money.
Yeah. Got to pay tribute to where it comes from.
And do we have to keep that out there?
Oh, yeah, they check every five or 10 years, send them a picture that is still up.
So I don't know which one of you is going to be responsible for the putting it up, and putting it up again, and putting it up again.
We're not gonna worry about that. So feel free to discuss what you want, or you can make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-10.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-10.
I support that.
Who's in support of adopt Resolution 2018-10? Is there any discussion? Have a roll call, vote, please.
Okay, that would be Colleen?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Motion carries. Moving on, I am the NEMC representative. Up until this month, we had two representatives and an alternate. Richard lied. we had two representatives and an alternate. Uh, Richard Lydecker, longtime resident, has been the representative for a long time, but unfortunately, he moved out of the township. So right now, we're lacking a representative. Have not found anybody yet, so if anybody has an interest, what it is, basically, there's a consortium of what, five communities?
Yeah.
And, uh, that runs Channel Six on Comcast. And so every community has representatives to go to that consortium. And basically, there's part of the Channel Six crew right here. Uh, you get paid thirty bucks a meeting. Meetings are in Armada once a month, and you might learn a little bit. First, you learn that you can't do anything with Comcast for good. It's not gonna happen. They don't care. But there are some things you can do.
It's true.
So, uh, we're not the Comcast. So anyway, I just, this is kind of informational, plus if anybody's interested, uh, contact the township, and we'll go from there. And we'd like to thank Richard for going there all these years.
Yes.
Uh, we really appreciate it, and we wish him well in his condo. Okay, moving on. Item F, cleaning service contract. We currently have a contract with a cleaning service company. Uh, the work has been unsatisfactory, so we're in the process of trying to get prices to replace them. Uh, there is a little, uh, language in the contract that they're not at will. You have to give them notice. I have talked to the manager once, and he's brought the date back a little, but I don't have the leverage to do anything because the board approved the contract. So I'm asking for authority to terminate the contract if we can work it out, so it's beneficial to us.
I'll move to give the supervisor the township authority to terminate the cleaning contract.
I'll support that. Who would support it? To authorize the supervisor to terminate the cleaning contract. Uh, that's it. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, have you started looking for a-
I got one price. Uh, I'd really like another.
Sure.
Uh, the price I got, we got a price in that person two years ago, but your business is good, but she's considerably more money than she was two years ago.
Okay.
So I need to get another price.
Yeah, there's other individuals right here in this township then.
Well, there aren't many, because when you talk to our insurance guy, he wants the guy to be insured.
Oh, okay.
If they have employees, they gotta workers come, and he wants a bond. Well, I don't know about the bond, because most aren't. So it's not a simple matter of just getting your neighbor to come over and clean the place.
Not anymore.
So-
I would, um, two things recommend that. One, there'll be a at-will termination either party at, without, at notice, and without a notice period. And also that we have the right to, uh, request that another, that any employee who's been working in the township be replaced by some other employee at our discretion, without cause.
That's kind of the problem we have now, because, uh, the person that's doing it is the only franchisee in this area.
I understand.
So we don't have an option. If they had ten franchisees over here, we could say, "Give us another one."
But sometimes it's important to keep things on track and to, for security to-
Right.
Be able to request a different employee than-
Well, I understand.
Probably wouldn't.
Well, it's our-
We always struck those, we did a lot of these things.
That was our first-
What do you mean by any employee?
If you have someone that's working in the township cleaning a hall, and you think that it's not adequate, or for any other reason, if they're not polite, if they're not at will, without cause, so you don't have to justify it.
Any employee.
You could say, any, any of the employees.
Cleaning employees.
Cleaning employees.
Yeah, it's not, not-
He said any employee. He means any cleaning.
Then you can ask the company, and hopefully they'll be large enough to put somebody else in there.
Right.
If they say you wanna-
I got you, yeah.
You want cause, you don't, you don't really wanna do that, because that becomes a real trial if you have to provide them.
Well, the only price we have, the owner and an employee would be here, and it's, uh, he would decide to terminate whenever they want.
Yeah, and that's adequate, but sometimes if you have, did this a lot.
Yeah, I understand. And that was kind of my fault, 'cause maybe I could've got that language better. Maybe I-
We'll, we'll recover.
I got some of it changed, but not that part.
I don't know.
Do we roll call, vote, please?
No, we have not.
I'm gonna roll call, vote, please.
Bond is such a big deal.
Oh, you wanna roll call?
Yes.
Wait a minute, I'm stuck. Okay, that would be Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item G, park property appraisal. This kind of snuck up on me, 'cause I thought we had another month. Uh, because when I talked to the appraiser, 'cause I've been, I touch base with him every couple months. He's a very nice guy. Uh, he said, you know, it was really a backlog, so I assumed that when we got that agreement back, it would take at least a month to get him. So I called him a couple weeks ago, and he thought maybe by the end of August, he'd be there, so we'd get the agreement done. Uh, you have to get an appraiser that is on the approved list of the D N R, and that's a very hard list, and he's on the list, and there aren't that many around. Uh, if you love paperwork and bureaucracy, that's the D N R. So, uh, an appraisal of property, he estimates twenty dollars. Now, that should be reimbursable, but we have to wait for the agreement to come back signed.
So you need, so you need, um-
I want approval to hire, uh, what is it, Cooper Nesbit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I made a motion to, um, to hire Cooper Nesbit appraisers for the purpose of appraising the park property. Was it for twenty-five hundred dollars?
That's the estimate?
The estimate of the-
So it's reimbursable? I don't wanna-
Yeah.
Do you wanna-
Trust anything, huh?
Want to not to exceed a amount, or just?
Uh, I don't know.
Just say a park appraisal.
You can put not to exceed three thousand.
Okay. I amend my motion to hire the, for, said, um, um, appraiser for, to appraise the park property for no more than three thousand dollars.
Okay, got it. I'll support that.
Who would support it? To hire Cooper Nesbit to do the appraisal of the park property after we get the signed agreement, or the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call, vote, please.
Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe.
Yes.
And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, payment of bills.
Any questions?
What was the big guess, though, for the eighty-six?
That's for our, our gas for mowing the lawn. Any others?
No, there aren't questions. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pay the bills as presented.
Okay, support.
Who would support it? Pay the bills as presented. Dan, were you talking about the one for like eighty bucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, he buys a bunch of gasoline that he uses in the cemetery in here, so. Uh, you notice the one big bill on there is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. That was for limestone. We just got a bill yesterday for seventeen thousand for the chloride, so we'll have, you know.
Another big bill.
A little bigger.
So, you know, and I was astounded, 'cause I always thought that limestone gets pounded down. It doesn't. It floats away.
Flows away.
Yeah.
True, my side of the coin.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you're, if you really get into it, maybe the chloride actually saves you money, but it sure doesn't seem like it.
Yeah.
I tell you.
It's the people's money just to float away.
Yeah, we had a motion in support, right?
Yeah.
Okay, have a roll call, vote, please.
Okay, Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, citizens' comments. It's your opportunity to address the board with questions or comments. We'd like you to have us give you your name, but it's not necessary if you don't wanna do it. Pretty quiet bunch.
Yeah. I hope that we're pretty quiet.
Yeah. The election, that was my deputy said, our election went very smoothly.
We're all busy.
Very busy, yes. Very busy. And especially since we had all new equipment. It was the first time we used it.
And then everybody liked the receipts, too, when you were-
Yeah, and I gave out, and I folded stickers. It's the first time we did it. We'll do it from now on if it makes everybody happy. We need to be happy.
Now, with two, working up here, now you can think you can manage to flow through here.
Yeah, it went well. It took very long, but it's tight, but it-
Yeah, but we did it at sixteen at the presidential. That was the biggest turnout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's better up here, you know. I really do.
There's a letter from the, uh, package that, I don't know if we can discuss it, 'cause it has a legal, it's a legal reference. The Comcast carry.
The Comcast?
There's a Comcast carry letter.
Oh, legal matter?
Yeah.
They're just discussing, uh-
Oh.
I asked the lawyer if he needed, uh, anything from the board, and he said they get to-
With respect to what? I don't know. What, what's it about?
Well, the gentleman's got a industrial building, and he's using it for something that's not even close to his site plan. Okay? And he knows it, and they're discussing it. And, uh, the lawyer said, you know, if it gets to a point that they're not gonna settle it right, that, you know, we decide we're gonna go to court, and I bring it to the board for their approval to do that.
So you're working to get it right with the party's activity?
Yeah. So he's discussing it. We got a couple other ones coming up that, uh, we may have to have the lawyer send him a letter. Hopefully, it won't go beyond that. I don't know. So we'll see what happens. Uh, I guess the only thing, our made a fair, it started yesterday. Uh, it's a pretty good fair. Uh, if you have the time and the inclination, it's a pretty good place to go. Uh, not much else going on. They're not done ditching on Melodrum yet, but they're working on it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they're still planning on paving Misner.
This is this year, huh?
Well, they're trying to get some agreements with some property owners on slowing the ditch or something.
You're kidding? They're giving them a hard time?